Alright, it's uh six thirty one, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Um clerk can you please take the roll?
Humphrey.
Here.
King.
Here.
Laxson.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
Michaels.
Present.
Pasalaqua.
Here.
Paul. Rodriguez.
Here.
Store.
Here.
Strab.
Here.
Summers.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Wolken.
Here.
Ammons. Carter.
Here.
Covert.
Present.
Esri.
Here.
Fortato.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Patterson.
Here. Alright, um. Uh could I have a motion for the approval of the agenda in the agenda?
To move Rodriguez.
Second, Thorson.
Alright Rodriguez and Thorson, uh is there any discussion or um? Alterations? Alright, seeing none, uh clerk can you call the roll?
Humphrey.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Laxson.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Pasalaqua.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Store.
Yes.
Strab.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Wolken.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Fortato.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes. Alright, and uh looks like the agenda is the approval of the April thirteenth twenty twenty one regular meeting.
Uh before that, could we note that uh Takiana Ammons has joined?
Thank you.
So.
Alright, Thorson in second. Alright, is there a second?
Covert in second.
Alright, Covert second, uh is there any uh discussion or um suggestions for alterations? Alright, seeing none, uh clerk can you please call the roll?
Humphrey.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Laxson.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Pasalaqua.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Store.
Yes.
Strab.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Wolken.
Yes.
Ammons.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Fortato.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes. Where the next uh item on the agenda is a public hearing. Um and I didn't see Darlene on Zoom. Spoke to her today and she said that she'd be uh speaking to this item, this is the um uh the agenda item is because of the requirements of section one forty seven F of the Internal Revenue Code. As amended on the plans to issue capital improvement revenue refunding bond series two thousand twenty one countryside school project. Uh in the amount not to exceed two million dollars. Is he uh Darlene now? Uh Darlene, can you speak to this?
Um yeah, I do, so I need to call the hearing to order, I'm sorry, I was having trouble getting connected tonight. Um. Good evening ladies and gentlemen, this hearing will come to order. Let the record reflect this is a public hearing being held pursuant to the requirements of section one four seven F. Of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty six as amended. Notice of this hearing was posted on the county's website on May fourth two thousand twenty one. This is a hearing regarding a plan to issue not to exceed. Two million dollars in aggregate principal amount of the county's capital improvement revenue refunding bonds. Series two zero two one countryside school project. The proceeds of the bonds will be loaned by the county to countryside school of Champagne Urbana Incorporated. And Illinois Not For Profit Corporation, including successors and assigns the borrower. And will be used to A, finance and refinance by refunding certain prior obligations. The acquisition, construction, and installation of a performance gym and related facilities. Improvements and costs at forty three oh one West Kirby Avenue Champagne, Illinois six one eight two two collectively the project. And B, pay a portion of the cost of issuing the bonds. Including but not limited to fees for credit enhancement or liquidity support for the bonds collectively the financing purposes. The project is owned and operated by the borrower. The county is authorized and empowered by the provisions of the Industrial Building Revenue Bond Act fifty Illinois. C S four four five dash one at secure. As supplemented and amended from time to time, the act. To issue its revenue bonds and to lend the proceeds thereof for the purpose of financing industrial projects. The bonds will be special limited obligations of the county. The principal of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds shall be payable solely out of the revenues derived from payments made by or on behalf of the borrower. Pursuant to a loan agreement among the county, the borrower, and the purchaser of the bonds. The bonds and the interests thereon shall never constitute a debt or indebtedness of the county. Within the meaning of any provision or limitation of the statutes or constitution of the state of Illinois, the state. And shall not constitute or give rise to a pecuniary liability of the county or a charge against its general credit or taxing powers. No owner of the bonds shall have the right to compel any exercise of the taxing power of the county. The state or any other political subdivision thereof to pay the principal of the bonds or the interest or premium if any thereon. The public hearing is required by section one four seven F of the Internal Revenue Code of eighteen eighty six as amended. At the time and place set for the public hearing, residents, taxpayers, and other interested persons. Will be given the opportunity to express their views for or against the proposed plan of financing. The issuance of the bonds and the nature and location of the facilities proposed to be financed and refinanced by the bonds. So that's why we're having this hearing this evening and I would like to ask at this time if there's anyone who wishes to submit any written comments at this public hearing. If so, you can raise your hand and. Okay, doesn't look like it. Is there? I'm sorry. Mr. Store.
Yes, you you asked for written uh comment.
Yeah, fast, first we asked for written comments.
Uh.
Is there anyone who wishes to share their views for or against the proposed bonds? Anyone from the public who would like to do that? And again, I'm not seeing any hands at this point. So it is now six forty one P M and this will conclude the public hearing for this evening, thank you. And then I just want to remind the board that there'll be opportunity for the board to discuss this at their next meeting. So the public hearings closed Kyle.
Alright, um. Next agenda item is public participation, are there any members of the public, uh Tricia Crowley?
Hi, my name is Tricia Crowley, I'm the president of the Champagne County League of Women Voters. And I wa- I was participant of the um county executives advisory committee on redistricting. And uh the committee I think was a nice wide variety of uh interested people in the county, we considered um. Numerous maps applying um objective criteria to each of the maps. And uh our discussions are all on are all recorded and you can um hear them yourself. As a result of that, the committee um uh basically agreed that the three maps that um. The county executive ultimately submitted were uh the best according to the statutory and case criteria for redistricting. The uh League of Women Voters has been a very strong advocate for nonpartisan commissions, but in the absence of that. An advisory commission help holding public meetings with a variety of citizens is certainly the next best thing and we would urge you to strongly consider. The maps that have been submitted by the county executive pursuant to statute, thank you.
Not seeing anybody else from the public, um so I would assume that is the end of public participation. Um next on the agenda are uh board communications, do any members of the board have any communications? Uh Mr. Pasalaqua.
Thank you and I apologize for the video in and out, but my bandwidth is suffering here. Um I have an extensive amount of communication from um many residents. In the Rolling Acres neighborhood, uh twenty one and counting emails um. One person is basically okay with the proposed detox center, um I have pages and pages of emails. Uh with lots and lots of questions about this facility. Um in the essence of time, I want to read one that. Basically describes uh most everyone's concerns, but I am going to forward. All of the emails to all of the board members and the county executive because the neighborhood has made it clear to me. Um that if they don't get some clear answers, they likely will seek counsel. Um no one is against a detox facility whatsoever. Um but everyone is extremely shocked that they have had not had a chance to be a part of a forum. Um that this has not fallen into a special use permit hearing with Z B A. Um basically, they just feel like it's being snuck in under the radar. Uh I'm gonna read one, uh like I said, that does basically um address most of the others. Uh and then follow up with forwarding. Uh Mr. Pasalaqua, I am contacting you about the possible opening of Navis Health Champagne in the Rolling Acres subdivision. The Navis Health website states that it's an alcohol and drug detox provider. I am aware of the need for these types of facilities and the great good they can provide to individuals in society when they are run in a professional manner. My concerns about and questions about Navis Health opening a facility in Rolling Acres subdivision are as follows. Rolling Acres is zoned as single family residential, it's a diverse neighborhood of young and old, is this appropriate neighborhood for the facility? If there has been a zoning waiver requested for Navis Health, why weren't Rolling Acres residents notified or were they? Is this a legitimate business, has anyone determined this before a zoning waiver was granted or license is issued? Residents have had no communication from Navis Health about the facility business. Many of us would like to know what to expect as far as extra traffic if any. And should we expect to see Navis Health residents in the neighborhood, who should we contact if we have questions or concerns after their facility opens? What medical and behavioral professionals are on the twenty four hour staff? Why have Rolling Acres residents not been informed by the zoning board, the county board? Or Navis Health about this addition to our neighborhood? Will we receive any information, if so, from whom and when? Are there other changes in our subdivision that we should be made aware of? Thank you for taking the time to listen to the concerns and questions about this change to our subdivision for your representation on the county board. Barper Courts twenty five oh three Rolling Acres Drive. Um I have another nineteen emails, uh some are worded a little stronger than that. Um as I said, generally speaking. There is not a negative narrative about these types of facilities, but just why is there no? Um. Special use permit being requested, why does this seem to have been uh snuck in under the wire? Some of the emails go on to um illustrate where the neighborhood has done some research into this company. Um even so far as to uh show where this address that's not even open yet. Already has five star reviews posted on their website. Um and when they look at the facilities that are already open, uh they illustrated a lot of. Free. Use that one is generally shocked by not having noticed. Um very worried about this going forward without any input. Um and extremely concerned, as I say, um I will forward these as they um come in. Darlene or Kyle, would this be something that I should forward to the two of you and you could disseminate or should I just email the entire county board?
You could email the board.
Thank you Kyle.
Alright, um. Uh Ms. Strab.
Thank you, um I just wanted to make everyone aware that um our community or counties um only emergency. Uh homeless shelter for men and women, um see you at home and see you at home Austin's place. Will be closing their doors temporarily uh beginning tomorrow morning. Uh this will affect the most vulnerable folks in our county and it's something that definitely we need to be aware of as we move forward with. Our federal aid dollars and um policies in general, thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Humphrey.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit on uh on Brad's uh comment, I mean I can't speak for the zoning committee or anything like that. Um but I have worked a lot with transitional centers, both in the D D world and and in uh adversely impacted populations. People were going through uh drug rehab and and alcohol uh rehab, um it's affected my family, it's affected a lot of my friends growing up in our community here. Um and overall, the need for this kind of transitionary uh program, the the facility, the space is so great. Um you could probably open four or five of these and they would be filled. And and the big question uh is, you know, if you're not gonna put it there, where? Uh you know, everybody's always gonna have a problem where.
Excuse me, excuse me, I thought this was just a place to share communication, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah, no, I mean, he he he's totally in order, so.
Okay, okay, that that's great, I appreciate the discussion and I agree with you, but I just wanted to make sure.
Brad, let Jordan talk.
Yes, um it's uh Mr. Humphrey has the floor.
Yeah, and I mean, if that got a rise out of you, I would question why? Um but you know, these facilities are very important and typically uh they they meet resistance. I've never met a facility that didn't tell me, yeah, when we first came in here, they wanted to burn our place down, like like people don't like these facilities. And yet there's not never really any evidence to back up saying, you know, oh, they shouldn't be in our community. Um I've worked a lot with with addicts in the past and and this is the first step to. A full recovery, it saves a lot of money in the long run because we're not having to deal with them in the criminal system or the jail system. Um and it's just, y- you know, these facilities, I I look forward to hearing from this company and and possibly reaching out to them myself. Uh because I'd love to to be more involved as a volunteer. Um these services save lives and quite a few of my friends might be alive today. Uh if we'd had the service in the first place, so I'm looking forward to this, um I'm definitely gonna try and be involved in it as much as I can. But I I can't emphasize enough how important these kind of transitional drug rehab facilities are for this county.
Uh Mr. Goss.
Thank you Kyle, um I just wanted to restate again this week that um here we are another meeting with no discussion about moving back into Brookins. Um it's time to get back in there so that we can have these um discussions face to face. There's plenty of room for social distancing and if everything goes well, we're actually gonna be in phase five on June eleventh, so at that point. Um I think it's time to get this board back in front of each other so that we can have meaningful discussions and we quit doing a roll call. On silly things like agenda approvals. Those things take a lot of time, we've got a bunch of stuff to get through the rest of the summer and I think it just goes a lot better when we can meet face to face, thanks.
Mr. Redwire.
Thank you. Um to. Add on to Mr. Pasquale. And on to Brad's comments, um I don't think anybody has a problem with the detox center. We have a problem with the the public and the people in our district seem to have a problem with when I agree with them. Uh that like Mr. Humphrey said, um we didn't, the county board hasn't had a chance to discuss this issue. Um it 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 seems to me that the process was intruncated. Uh by the zoning board that the public hasn't had a co- opportunity to comment and it's just dropped on us. Um from the public as they find out in their neighborhood um that this is happening, uh any other issue? That was a responsibility of the county would be brought to the county to be discussed. And the public would have an o- opportunity to comment and that's not happening with this issue and now we're discussing and communication. Um because it wasn't and we shouldn't be discussing it or debating in a com- in communication. We should be debating and discussing it um at a board meeting, thank you.
Uh Mr. Pasalaqua.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to say, Jordan, uh Mr. Humphrey, I agree with you one hundred percent. And as a zoning board member, we worked on an incredibly successful uh facility with a uh special use permit. Um I agree wholeheartedly that there they can be wonderfully positive places, but. Um but we still owe the neighborhood uh ordinance compliance and and information, that was my only point and uh. And I'm in communication, sharing communication and and if you think that I'm putting a negative narrative on it, I'm I'm simply reporting what I have. But uh I appreciate your comments and I agree with them.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thanks, um so I didn't want to respond to any individual comment, I guess I just, in the interest of, um it seems like this might be a sustained area of conversation. Um so I wanted to add maybe some more generative questions. Um first, what does an appropriate neighborhood look like, we know that separation outside of um um somebody's community, right? And that they're embedded in is a really key part of recovery, um so I think i- if you are, if you are somebody weighing in on this, that's a, it's a good question to ask. Um second, what does the programming look like at these kind of facilities? Does it adapt to relapses, for example? Um what are the health resources look like, looking like, if this is a, is this is a detox facility? What those resources look like, um what are they offering uh people who come in for these services is really key. Um and then next, uh what does access to visitors look like, support from family is really, really key in these kind of facilities. Um so again, if if you are somebody who is concerned about the um of the establishment of a detox center like this, these are just a couple of questions that I would run through. My partner died of an overdose in twenty eighteen, so it's something that I'm really familiar with, he stayed in um detox facilities like this at least three times. Um then finally, if we are gonna really commit to a sustained conversation on this, um I would uh I will insist on avoiding stigmatizing language like addicts. Um this is a health condition, uh substance use disorder is the way that we should talk about this, again, it is a health condition, um not a moral uh flaw, thanks.
Thank you, uh are there any more uh comments or communications? Alright, seeing none, uh we're gonna move on to Justice and Social Services. So uh Ms. Taylor.
Sorry, um I was having a microphone issue there. Um okay, Justice and Social Services, there really isn't much. Um we have the monthly reports, uh those are on the webpage. Um. Item B, we have the Rosecrans Reentry Financial Report from March uh this year, that is information only. Um I don't have any other business or a chair's report and I do not have any designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda. Back to you, Kyle.
Alright, um next on the agenda is uh the Finance Committee. Stephanie.
The first item of business is budget amendment uh uh twenty one dash zero 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 one six. Fund zero eight nine County Public Health Fund Department zero four nine Board of Health. Increased appropriations three thousand uh three hundred thousand, sorry, I'm a little, my allergies are a little bad today, so you're gonna have to just bear with me. Three hundred twenty one thousand two hundred fifty eight dollars, increased revenue of three hundred twenty one thousand two hundred fifty eight dollars. Reason COVID mass vaccination grant funding awarded to Public Health Department from state of Illinois two hundred ninety thousand. And increase local health protection grant funding thirty one thousand two hundred fifty eight dollars, do I have a motion?
So move Taylor.
Taylor, second.
I'll second.
Okay, second, Lashkin and discussion? Seeing none, uh please call the roll.
Humphrey.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Laxson.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Pasalaqua.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Store.
Sorry, I was, yes.
Strab.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Wolken.
Yes.
Ammons.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Fortato.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Alright, um next up, budget amendment twenty one dash zero 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 one seven. Fund zero eight zero General Corporate Department zero four zero Sheriff. Increased appropriations sixty seven thousand eight hundred thirty four, increased revenue of sixty seven thousand eight hundred thirty four. Reason increased grant funding to cover increased fiscal year twenty one expenditures for the new records management R M S implementation and there's an attached memo, do I have a motion?
So move Taylor.
Taylor, second, Mr. Thorson, uh discussion. I will just mention that the reason for this is, this is a project that has come before this body before, um it's just going quicker than they thought and so they need all of the money, we anticipated this would take until next year, so. I guess it's a good problem to have, any uh discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Humphrey.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Laxson.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Pasalaqua.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Store.
Yes.
Strab.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Wolken.
Yes.
Ammons.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Fortato.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Um next up, budget amendment twenty one dash zero 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 one nine. Fund one zero three Highway Federal Aid Matching Fund Department zero six zero Highway. Increased appropriations three hundred forty five thousand two hundred ninety seven dollars, increased revenue zero reason. Request for budget amendment for final county share of C H thirteen section number seventeen dash zero four four five dash. four four five dash zero zero RS. Agreement executed with the State of Illinois on seven twenty-five, two thousand and eighteen. Three hundred fifty thousand was carried in the federal aid fiscal year twenty twenty budget. The final invoice was received on fiscal year, um, I'm sorry, on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Grant funding of two point three million was received. The total project cost was two uh, million six hundred forty-five thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars. Uh, do I have a motion?
So move Michaels. Oh, Covert, excuse me.
Are the uh, Covert and Michael second?
Yes, ma'am.
And Michael second. Any discussion? And Lorraine, this was just a project right that was done. We were just waiting on the bill.
Uh, yes, project was done.
Okay. I don't see anybody else. Uh, please call the roll.
Humphrey.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Laxson.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
Sorry, guys. Yes.
Pasalaqua.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Store.
Yes.
Straub.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Wolken.
Yes.
Ammons.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Portato.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Um, next up, we have the Treasurers Monthly Report for April. Um, the treasurer is on the, at the meeting. Um, if anybody has any questions, the treasurer. Seeing none, uh, the auditor, same thing.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
Yeah. Stephanie, can I go back to the treasurer?
Sure. Sorry, I didn't see it. I didn't, yeah, if I'm missing your hand, just feel free to jump in. Go ahead, Jim.
Um, uh, CJ, could you update us on if there's been any progress with the Fisher item? So if any of those folks are listening, um, maybe they can hear it from the county treasurer.
Sure, that's fine, Jim. So, um, as of right George, do you have something to say?
No.
Okay, sorry, I'm like, sorry, I'm like, um, as of right now, um, uh, we're waiting for the DevNet to get back to us. We had to wait for a couple of um, letters from, well, obviously the bond debatement from Fisher, we got that. And then DevNet gave us an update of what where they're gonna require and letting us know that it's gonna be a cost item because it's not part of our uh, contract with them. Um, it's something outside of so. So, um, right now, I'm just waiting for the DevNet to give me the rundown of like what that cost is gonna be. Um, and as soon as I get that information, I'll just tell them to go ahead. And then the expectation is, as of right now, we're believing that Fisher is gonna be agreeable to paying the cost as long as it's not something, I guess astronomical. But um, it's seeming like it should be around the five thousand dollar mark. But again, we don't have the quotes yet, and that's what we're waiting on. Um, and once they give us that information, then we can say, okay, go ahead and make it happen. And it should be a uh, pretty simple overnight. We're just gonna start basically sending out bills and we'll be good to go. Right now, um, I know that they're actually trying to work on the scripts. I'm not exactly sure when I'll hear back from them, but I anticipate, um, I'll be calling regardless tomorrow to find out where we're at and what else they need from us.
Thank you, thank you. I know it's, your uh, work on this is much appreciated by the folks in Fisher and and by uh, myself and Jacob, as, because it's our district, so appreciate it very much. Thank you.
No problem.
Hey, CJ, I just have a, a treasure, I have a really quick follow-up question to Jim. Did your, I know we're gonna have to reissue, we're gonna have to mail these. Is your budget open? Is your bud, can your budget?
For right now, for right now it is, um, but because again, they're, to a certain extent, whatever, they'll allow us a good bit for mailing. But the expectation is that I'm more likely than not, we're gonna actually have to request additional budget, and then we have to have a conversation probably at the finance, um, the next finance committee meeting about um, how we're going to deal with the additional costs that kind of like trickled in, aside from just having to have net due to bills.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the treasurer? Auditor.
Hi.
Any, uh, that, uh, George, uh, provided, Auditor Danus provided a memo for us on the state of the audit. Does anybody have any questions of the auditor? I don't see any, so we're gonna move on. Um, County Executive Section has several things. Uh, the first is a resolution adopting the Champaign County financial policies. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved Goss.
Mr. Goss, do I have a second?
I'll second.
King, second. Um, I believe well, does anybody have any questions? Uh, you might ask Tammy to speak to this.
Good evening. Um, I'll just point out a couple of uh, highlights. I I did draft a memo on this that um, covered some of the main changes. The first thing that I'd like to talk about is just um, increasing the minimum number of um, years that would be included for revenue and expenditure in the financial forecast. So historically, we have done the current year plus four fiscal years. And my recommendation is that we do the current year plus five fiscal years. Uh, and that the last forecast that I prepared did have that. GFOA is recommending longer term forecast and you know, i- it's even advised that longer than five-year terms be considered, but I didn't want to implement that as a requirement, but felt like we needed at least current year plus five years. Um, the main change, I would say, is the um, recommendation to increase the county's minimum fund balance from twelve and a half percent to sixteen point eight seven percent. Back in two thousand seventeen, I recommended sixteen point seven percent be implemented as our target. And that's based on GFOA's recommendation that um, governments have at minimum um, at least two months of regular generating, uh, general operating uh, revenues or expenditures. And at that time, the county really wasn't in a position to be able to um, achieve that goal. So I didn't want to hurt our bond rating, and so um, I recommend it as a target. But now that we're in a healthier position and we have a better fund balance, um, I would recommend that we do move that minimum to sixteen point seven percent. And finally, the other um, change, it's not a major change, but just uh, include, including the um, requirement that the county comply with its continuing disclosure requirements. I'm just making sure that that is in here um, for future awareness. Uh, most people know that's a requirement, but I felt it was a good idea to go ahead and include that in our policies.
Thank you, thank you very much for your work on that. Any questions for Tammy or Darlene? Seeing none, uh, please call the roll.
Humphrey.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Laxson.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Pasalaqua.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Store.
Yes.
Straub.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Wolken.
Yes.
Ammons.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Portato.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
All right, next up is the fiscal year twenty twenty county budget process, and at this time, I'll just turn it over to Darlene to talk about that.
Okay, this is the same memo that we had before. As you know, the county has a particularly robust budget schedule so that we can meet our deadlines. We have to have a budget approved in place by November. So we try to back that up with all the tasks that need to happen, and Tammy and I worked out the schedule for this year. It's basically the same schedule that we had last year, but just moved the dates back a day or two. Um, I do want to make the correction to uh, paragraph one because this year we do have the American Rescue Plan money, and the end of paragraph one says we will receive an allocation of forty-one plus or forty million from the American Rescue Plan, which must be spent by two thousand twenty-four. And yesterday, um, in the further guidance that was given, it turns out it doesn't actually have to be all spent by that time. It has to be obligated by that time, which will help us maybe with some longer-term projects. Um, the other point that I want to make is that on the last page, under number five for the budget documents for departments, um, we did change a little bit after um, talking with Tammy. Um, we have always had um, um, some leftover, I won't say leftover money, but we budget for the full amount of all staff salaries. And uh, we always have a little bit of money left because we have vacancies at various points during the year. And so where it says number five expenditures for personnel, um, administrative services completes those and basically fills them out for all positions at full-time for the full year. So we would like to make that now um, at ninety-five point five percent um, for the health insurance expenditures because um, we usually have some leftover at the end. It just goes back into the general fund. If we, if we budgeted at ninety-four point five percent, we'll actually have that extra five point five percent to put in the budget to do something with. So we would like to do that this year and make that change. But other than that, it pretty well looks the same as it has in past, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. Okay, it was just a discussion item. It doesn't really need to be approved. It's just, I just wanted the board to be aware of the schedule and what we're doing. And some of the tasks involved the board as well. There's a special finance committee of the whole in September um, for public comment. There's uh, legislative budget hearings for everybody to talk about what we're doing with the board, et cetera. So those will be additional meetings that the board will be involved with. So, thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you. The next item of business is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Champaign and Urbana Public Health District and Champaign County for the allotment transfer of local cure funding. Um, would somebody make a motion?
Unmoved, Thorson.
Mr. Thorson, second.
Second, Taylor.
Taylor. The Ts are active today. Um, Darlene, if you could speak to this?
Sure. This is kind of an odd um, just legal thing that we have to go through. Um, the Public Health Department has um, some money left over from an allocation for cures that we um, that that was given to them, but can be given back to the county if they didn't need it, which they didn't. They got so many supplies and um, to help from the state during last year that they did not need to use all of the funds they were allocated. And so they would like to be able to give it back to the county in order for us to spend it on our expenses, which we do have expenses, we can claim for it. So um, this is, it requires that we do an intergovernmental agreement to do that transfer. There's another grant that they have as well, which does not require an intergovernmental agreement. It just requires a budget amendment. So there, you'll see two different things. But this is the intergovernmental agreement.
And we are specifically um, planning to allocate these funds uh, towards public safety salaries that were incurred. Is that correct? Okay. Any addition, any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Humphrey.
I just had, I had a, a comment really. Um, I, I just, I smiled when I saw this and I realized what it was, just because, I mean, when we talk about rough years and years where people really had to go above and beyond, um, I mean, our, our local public health department is being nationally recognized for its hard work. So a big, you know, mental round of applause to Julie Pride and the, and the Public Health District. The fact that they're even returning money to us when there are public health districts just a few miles away that are deeply in trouble and struggling with this. Uh, I'm, I'm just flabbergasted and in awe. So absolutely, uh, mental round of applause for all the work they've been doing.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Humphrey.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Laxson.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Pasalaqua.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Store.
Yes.
Straub.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Wolken.
Yes.
Ammons.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Portato.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Um, thank you. The next item we have is a request for public input on the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. Um, first, I just, I thank you for everyone who was able to attend our first um, study session. I think we had a good conversation and it was a good way to kick it off. And I thank you to Darlene for uh, putting this memo together. Uh, I really wanted to have a meeting where, by which we could um, garner public input and uh, the finance, um, at our finance agenda meeting, we had a fairly robust conversation about the best way to do this in a way that was fair and inclusive. Uh, Tammy mentioned that the um, interim guidelines from the the federal government on the ARPA funding has come out. And if you've not had a chance to look it over, um, I, I hope that you do. It's, it's not a short read. It's like a hundred fifty pages. Uh, but it is interesting, and I do think it gives us a little bit more of like what they mean when they say the word water, right? Or what they mean when you say some of these other terms. Um, but one of the things it says right at the very beginning, um, I think it's the second page, that, that is part of this process, that local governments should um, be focusing on public input, transparency, and accountability. And what we're hoping is that this would be a step uh, towards that. So we, what we've decided is we're still gonna just have just a regular public input. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask the public to give us up to two hundred fifty words um, written that we can then group together within a board packet. So then, A, we'll have a record of what people um, care about. Um, I want us to be real clear to the public, for those that are listening. We're not asking for specific funding proposals. What we're asking for is priorities and ideas, right? Um, on the funding, so that we can begin to have um, a co- a structured conversation, which down the road might lead to funding proposals, but we definitely aren't there yet. Um, so um, how we're gonna do this is folks have until Sunday, this Sunday, to email um, Megan. And if, if they could go ahead and email Megan, and I'll read that, so just in case anybody's watching this, that they can know where that email is, it is. Um, uh, Megan Robinson's email is M R O B I S O N at C O dot champagne dot Illinois, sorry, dot I L dot U S. So that's C O dot champagne dot I L dot U S. Um, Darlene, I, I'm sure you'll get this up on our website and hopefully social media and things like that. But honestly, this is only gonna work if all of the board members talk to people in groups and organizations within your community and encourage them to do this. I generally want to hear from all corners of the county. Um, and the only way that we could do that is if you reach out to people and encourage them to submit. So they have until Sunday so that Megan has enough time to group them. Well, our ideas will group them by topic. And then that way, when we have a board meeting, we could kind of have a more structured conversation. This won't be the last time that we'll have a chance for public input. Um, once, you know, we get into specific topics more in-depth, I think then maybe we can have a more robust, you know, conversational public input. But this, I think, is a good first step to get us started. Um, and again, I think, uh, you know, we kind of went back and forth and Darlene kind of came up with the idea that we went with, so thank you for that, Darlene. And Darlene, I didn't know if you had any um, comments or thoughts on that.
Um, just want to say that for this particular time, it is a fairly short timeframe, and that's partly because we're announcing it tonight, and then the, the study session is in a couple of weeks, so we have to have time to put it together. But um, you know, obviously, people can still look on the website for all the meeting announcements. There's still public participation time at most of our meetings, et cetera, so people have plenty of opportunity to submit things.
I like this too, because then it's a document that we could refer back to. Sometimes when people just talk, unless you take really copious notes, it, it, and then you might lose the paper you wrote those copious notes on, if you're like me, so um, so I like this idea. All right. So please go forth and get input. The last um, other biz or um, chairs report, the only thing for my chairs report is I wanted to give a sincere um, congratulations to um, our fellow board member Tatiana Ammons, who graduated today from Parkland College. Um, and especially given the it was a personal triumph, um, given the it was a personal triumph, um, given the year that you've had, um, council member I, I Ammons. And so just sincere congratulations, and you should, and just great deal of, and I'm actually pretty impressed you showed up to the meeting on this day. Congratulations. So thank you for, for that, and congratulations, Patty.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Um, besides that, um, I just want to say, uh, for the consent agenda, I have A one, A two, and A three, and D three. And with that, I will give it back to Mr. Patterson.
All right, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, item number ten, policy personnel appointments, uh, Dr. Store.
Thank you Chairman Patterson. Uh, the county executives submit an annual monthly human resources reports. It's filed on pages forty-one through forty-three. It looks like there's a heap of vacancies, um, especially in the courts and correctional officers. Uh, and we have some outstanding claims for, uh, work with compensation. Uh, moving on to appointments and reappointments, uh, we have, uh, several of those, and I'd like to, uh, uh, recommend a, uh, or suggest a, uh, lumping of items, number, uh, ten, uh, to A, B, C, D, E. Uh, resolution appointing Catherine Stacy to the Locust Grove Cemetery Association. Unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Resolution appointing Dr. Derek Winston Lee to the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District. Term June first, twenty twenty-one through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Resolution appointing Steve Parrish to the Penfield Public Water District, term.
Uh, Store, you have a hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Go ahead, or who, who's, who's got their hand up?
Uh, Mr. Store, it's Jim Goss, I don't, uh, I don't D and E on, uh, omnibus.
Okay. Okay, uh, in that case, then, we, uh, could I have a motion for the items two, A, B, and C, as I read? Uh, for, uh, uh, taken as a, as a group?
So moved Laxson.
Second Thorzlin.
Thank you, uh, is there a discussion on these appointments? Hearing none, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Humphrey?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Laxson?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pessalequa?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Straub?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thorzlin?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Ammons?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Very good, uh, the motion carries unanimously for, uh, items, uh, two, A, B, uh, and C. Uh, moving on, item two D, resolution appointing Megan Hennessy to the Sangamon Valley Public Water District, term beginning June first, twenty twenty-four through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a, uh, motion and a second?
So moved.
Second Straub.
Thank you, uh, discussion on, uh, on the motion.
Mr. Store, it's Jim Goss again.
Yes.
Um, this is, this is out in my district, and I have, uh, I will not be supporting Ms. Hennessy or Ms. Schultz. Um, they are on the Muhammad Seymour School Board. And these appointments being as long as they are, um, Muhammad Seymour has the potential for a major building project that will come up in the next, in that term. And, sorry, Walgreens was calling. That, the, they have a major building project that will be coming up, and I believe this will cause a conflict of interest between the school board and the water district. So I would like, I will not be supporting, um, this for that reason.
Very good, Mr. Patterson.
Um, in regards to a conflict of interest, um, when it comes to serving on, uh, different, uh, public bodies that are established by law, uh, there's clear guidance on that from the Attorney General on, um, what seats are compatible and incompatible. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think before we make savings like that, I mean, I, I'd like to know that, um, uh, some research has been done, and if it has been done, it would be, uh, helpful to share that with the board. Because I mean, you know, if we're in a situation right now, or we're going to appoint somebody to a legal conflict of interest, that would have been, you know, nice to have ahead of time.
Thank you, Mr. Goss, you have another comment?
Yeah, I do, I, well, I guess unless somebody else does, I don't want to speak twice, but, um, well, that's, my point is that, um, actually, all three of these have a conflict because of, um, in the past, it has been pushed by, um, the third person to move the school into the water district and into other land. And so I don't, again, I, I have no issue, um, other than I believe this is going to come up in the next five years, and I don't want to see, um, I don't want to see these become an issue, um, for the voters. I also had several people reach out to me, and, um, I encouraged them to forward emails to the county executive, and so I don't, I assume they did that. But there were several people that reached out on, on these two appointments as well, so I, I've said my piece, thank you.
Uh, can I ask a question, Mr. Goss?
Sure.
Uh, d- does that conflict exist right now, or is this a possible future, uh, conflict?
Well, Muhammad Seymour is talking about building a new junior high. Now, they think they know where they're going to site it, but it is not cited at this point. Um, they are in discussions right now with the community, and certainly the board will be making a decision um, in the next five years to make the site be known. So, that's, that's where I believe the conflict exists.
Okay, well, their, their appointment seems to be only for a five-year term, and with only a possible, uh, conflict, uh, that, that might be, uh, uh, something, um, be, uh, a- a- and you're sure that the water district serves the school?
No, the water district does not serve the school at this point. However, there are multiple sites where the water district would serve a new school.
I see. Okay, well, th- th- this kind of almost comes, comes out to, uh, something that might have, that, that, that may or may not happen as, as we, as we think. Uh, the, uh, Mr. McGuire?
Thank you, I, I also won't be supporting these, uh, candidates. Uh, for the same reason, I don't like the idea that we're setting up a situation where there's a huge conflict, um, with the society of a junior high, which is millions of dollars worth of, um, facility, um, between these people and their responsibilities on school board, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor? Lee, uh, you, you have your hand up, would you like to speak to the motion?
Am I not, okay, my mute is off, um, can you hear me?
You can, we can hear you, you're very faint.
Oh, sorry, I will move much closer. I lost my, oh, no, I got it.
Lee, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Uh, Ms. Taylor, you have your hand up, speak to the motion?
Nobody can hear me? All right.
Oh my, okay, uh, I think Lee's may have had a little thing there. Seeing no other, seeing no other, uh, comments, uh, or, or questions, can I ask the clerk to please call the roll on this item?
Humphrey?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Laxson?
Yes.
McGuire?
No.
Michaels?
No.
Pessalequa?
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Straub?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thorzlin?
Yes.
Wolken?
No.
Ammons?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Esri?
No.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
No.
Harper?
No.
Patterson?
Yes.
I'm very sorry, I forgot to record the, uh, the votes. Uh, does the clerk have the, have the count for those, please?
Yes, it was fourteen to seven.
Fourteen to seven, thank you, that motion passes. We're moving on to item number two, E, resolution appointing Colleen Schultz to the Sangamon Valley Public Water District, term beginning June first, twenty twenty-one, ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a, um, a, a motion?
Second Straub.
Second Patterson.
Okay, thank you, uh, is there other comments to the, uh, uh, or? Mr. Goss, did you want to, uh, repeat your comment, or is it, nope, okay, uh, Stanley Harper? Stan, Mr. Harper, do you have a, you? Yeah, I do, Chris, uh, thank you so much. Uh, I think we're missing a point here. Uh, we're saying that term is five years, but if you have two school board members that are also on the water authority district, that could mean a huge influx of tax dollars for that district. Is it right for them to sit on both boards and make that decision? I mean, it's the whole village of Mohammed, but you got probably seven school board members, and you got two of them pushing one thing for the site, the new site in the Sangamon District, Sangamon Water Authority District. I think you got to look at it that way, that's why I'm voting no. So, uh, that's all I got to say, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harper, and Ms. Taylor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, um, what I was going to say before applies as well to this one, uh, since it's the same situation. Uh, I understand what people are trying to say about, um, not wanting to potentially create a conflict of interest. Um, I, I don't think that we can do that. I will be supporting this, because who knows, the next three applicants we might have, while they may not be on the school board or have a conflict of interest at this time, they could always run for school board, they could develop a conflict of interest. I have to deal with just what I have right now, and these look like good applicants, or at least, at least the ones that I'm voting yes on, thank you.
All right. Does anybody know right off, does the Sangamon Valley Public Water, uh, District collect any taxes? Mr. Goss, you're in that district today, does the Sangamon Valley Public Water District collect taxes?
They do.
They collect taxes?
I believe so, I, I can't answer that, because I'm not in that district, I'm in Village Mohammed, so I can't answer.
I believe that they are, they're fee-based, they're a fee-based organization, so that the users pay the fee.
Okay, does that, does that, uh, yeah, does that, uh, address your question, Mr. Harper? Since, uh, the, since they, uh, collect fees rather than taxes? Yeah, uh, yeah, I think it does, but I still have, uh, just as Ms. Taylor said, I have concerns the other way, so, yeah. It, it's, uh, I don't live in Mohammed, I'm just, uh, I, I, I've sat on the school board for twenty-two years. I hate to have somebody, uh, trying to push their own personal agenda, and that's what worries me, so, uh, uh, I'll probably still be, uh, voting no on this, so, thank you. Mr. Summers, do you have, uh, speak to the motion?
Uh, just a comment, uh, all school board members, uh, do sign off on a code of conduct, uh, specified by the I A S B. One of the lines in that is that they will avoid any conflict of interest or appearance of impropriety, which could result from my position. And will not use their board position for personal gain or publicity, which is not an exact match, but they would always have the opportunity to recuse themselves, uh, seven members on a school board. We really don't know how this is going to end out, or we don't know what the, Village of Mohammed's school district is going to be doing either. As, as Leah pointed out, we can't really make a decision, I think, on what could potentially be, uh, a conflict of interest, because that's not occurred to this point. So I will, I will be voting in favor of, I, 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 that's, that is why I supported those, uh, previous candidates.
Thank, thank you, sir, uh, Mr. Thorzlin?
Yeah, thank you, sort of to back up Leah's point, uh, and thank you, Steve, for bringing up the code of conduct. Uh, we, not that long ago, had a county board member from District One, who was also the fire chief, and was also the township supervisor, representing three different taxing bodies, would drive the fire department truck to the county board meetings, uh, nobody complained. Uh, this was one of the more respected members of the county board, who was intelligent enough when there was a perceived conflict to, um, abstain from a vote that might have an effect on the other parts of it. Uh, so it's interesting that we worry about what might potentially be a possible, in the future, kind of conflict, when we used to have representation from out there that wore three different taxing hats to the same meetings. Uh, so, I, I would support this, uh, I think that these people can run for this, uh, if they want to, or be appointed to this, and, uh, will use their own code of personal conduct and the conduct that's been described to them in the, uh, school board code to do the right thing.
Thank you. Are there, are there other, uh, comments or questions to this motion? Seeing no hands raised and hearing no voices, uh, can the clerk please call the roll?
Humphrey?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Laxson?
Yes.
McGuire?
No.
Michaels?
No.
Pessalequa?
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Straub?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thorzlin?
Yes.
Wolken?
No.
Ammons?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Esri?
No.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
No.
Harper?
No.
Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I have fourteen to seven, and, uh, the motion passes. Next item is, uh, number two, F, resolution appointing Oldland Park Hill to the Sangamon Valley Public Water District, unexpired term ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, would, uh, uh, anyone like to, uh, uh, speak to the motion?
So moved Esri.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, we had to have a, 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 I, I jumped over the motion. Would somebody second the motion?
Second, Goss.
Thank you. All righty, uh. I, I've had a, 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 a few communications about this appointment, and, uh, there seems to be some concerns about, uh, Mr. Parkhill, uh, as a, uh, active, uh, property developer and, uh, owner, property owner, uh, may have some, likely has some conflicts of interest, uh, in this regard. Uh. And, and since these came from diverse places, I, and, and seemed to, uh, us support, have enough overlap to support each other, I, I've had, uh, those communications. Uh, would anybody, uh, like to, uh, Mr. Esri?
Yes, thanks. Um. I guess I'm having a hard time seeing how being a developer has a conflict with serving on a public water board anymore than what we just were talking about. Um, granted, I voted against the previous, the, um, two resolutions, but I don't see how being a developer, um, in that area has an issue with being on the water board anymore than serving on a school board. Uh, and then what some people said would think serving on the school board has any issue with being on the water, um, district board. Um. Hmm. So he develops ground, um, that doesn't mean that he's not gonna have the best interest of, of a water district in mind, um. He doesn't want the water district to succeed or, you know, serve the customers well, um. So that idea, I guess in this case, it, it's kind of the, uh, kind of the same thing as the last two people, the discussion we had, I guess, that turned around in that I don't see where the conflict would be, would come from, and again, okay, let him decide if he has a conflict as it comes to voting on something at the water district. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Esri. Uh, Mr. Patterson?
Um, I, I guess I just wanna make clear, I, I, I'm not here to argue about, uh, conflicts of interest. Uh, other people have made those arguments. Um, honestly, in many aspects, I don't have enough, you know, information to, um, say one way or the other, but, uh, to compare these, the, the two arguments as being the same, um, misses a fundamental aspect of the dynamics in that the argument that was been made with the school board members, uh, didn't involve personal financial gain and an argument of a conflict of somebody's personal, uh, uh, employment or whether personal income comes in, i- is a totally different dynamic. And actually, when we talk about, uh, conflicts of interest, uh, like legal conflicts of interest, uh, it tends to only apply to, uh, situations of personal financial gain. So I just wanna say that the two, uh, arguments are fundamentally different.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Ms. Laxson, you had your hand up. Did you?
I did, but, uh, Kyle just made the point that I was going to make. Uh, I think as school board members, there's no position to gain personally from that position where as a developer has a lot more, I guess, financially, personally at stake. I can see where the conflicts would be completely different in these situations.
Mr. McGuire, you, oops, did you have your hand up, Jim? Mr. McGuire?
The only thing I was gonna say was, we're gonna have an awful short list of application applicants for offices. Um. If we decide property owners and, um, builders aren't allowed to be part of these, um, committees.
Thank you for your comment. Uh.
Thank you.
Any, oh, Mr. Goss, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure whether I'm gonna support this or not, but I would like to put it on the record that because he owns the district or ground in the district and he wants to develop it, he's got a right to water. And if it's served by Sangamon Valley Water, that's who his water source is. So it's not personal gain if he already owns the land and develops it. He's at the, he's at the risk of development, which is big. And he has a right to a public utility if it, if it sits on, he owns ground in both. As far as I know, he owns it in both districts, um, both in the Mohammed, our Village of Mohammed and, um, in the other, the other Sangamon Valley District. So he has a right to water. I don't see how that's personally, um, gained for him because he's gonna get water one way or another. Thank you.
Interesting argument, uh, perhaps. Uh, Mr. McGuire, you have further comment?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh. Hello? Interesting, uh, sharing of comments. Uh, if there's no other, uh, further comments or questions regarding the motion, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Humphrey?
No.
King?
No.
Laxson?
No.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
No.
Pasalaqua?
Nope.
Rodriguez?
No.
Store?
No.
Straub?
Straub.
No.
Summers?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Thorson?
No.
Wolken?
No.
Ammons?
No.
Carter?
No.
Covert?
No.
Esri?
Yes.
Fortato?
No.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I.
Thank you. Uh, I have seventeen, uh, like, uh, or four in favor and seventeen against. So, uh, the, uh, motion is defeated. All right, uh, there's a number of vacancies that, uh, are on the, uh, county website, and they follow, uh, below for, uh, that we'll consider next month, Locust Grove Cemetery Association, Bailey Memorial Cemetery Association, Prairie View, and Cross Cemetery Associations, East Lawn Memorial Burial Park, County Board of Health Developmental Disabilities Board, Champaign County Forest Preserve, and Rural Transit Advisory Group. So, uh, and there may be some additional, uh, vacancies on the, on the website. Item number three, request for job content evaluation committee to review a senior zoning technician position for the, uh, planning and zoning department. So moved, Thorson. Thank you. All right. Uh, do we have a second?
Second, Straub.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have discussion on the, uh, on the motion? Seeing no hands, hearing no voices, would the clerk please call the roll?
Humphrey?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Laxson?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pasalaqua?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Straub?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thorson?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Ammons?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Harper?
No.
Patterson?
Yes.
I have, uh, twenty to one. Uh, the motion passes. Uh, request for a job, number four, number, request for job content evaluation committee to review assistant animal control director position for animal control department. Do I have a, uh, 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 can somebody make a motion?
Second, Laxson.
Oh, second, Taylor.
Laxson and Taylor, thank you. Uh, discussion on the motion. Ms. Michaels?
Thank you, sir. Um, I am in favor of this. However, I thought at one point years ago that, um, we already had this position or Stephanie was to put this position in place. My, I thought we had actually an assistant animal control, like in first second.
Ms. Michaels, yeah, can I speak to that, please? So what, what the county does have is the, the law requires that you have an administrator of your veterinary, that's a veterinarian, and if your administrator is not a veterinarian, then you have to have an, an assistant administrator that's a veterinarian. And so in our case, um, Stephanie Joe fills two roles. She is an administrator of the, for the legal purposes of the law, and she's also the director of the animal control department. And the veterinarian is the assistant administrator. So the veterinary has no other obligations other than to do the veterinary activities, but they're required, we're required by law to have somebody that's designated as the assistant administrator that does those tasks, um, because Stephanie's not a veterinarian. And so we do have an assistant administrator, but we don't have an assistant director that's, that's, I mean, I will say Susan covers somewhat while Stephanie is gone, but she's not, like, she doesn't supervise the staff and do scheduling and take care of things like that, uh, the billing, you know, whatever's going on. Um, and I say that knowing Stephanie's actually on vacation this, this week, and she doesn't get very many vacations for that reason. She rarely gets to take more than a day off or two days off because there's no coverage for doing the things that come up. So, um, Susan covers what she can, but she's not a director of the department. So that's what we're asking for, is a backup person, um, to do the, the, you know, to cover the phone or to be able to schedule staff if somebody's out or those kinds of things.
Ms. Michaels?
Yes, thank you, sir, for letting me follow up. And I under, I believe I understand what you're saying, but if we have not been in, um, compliance, if you will, I thought that we took care of this a long time ago. Maybe there was a reorganization after that, and I'm talking probably five, six years ago. I, I know we talked about her having somebody in place to do these things, and I'm not saying we shouldn't reevaluate it. Please don't make me forget that. What I'm trying to say is that I wanna make sure we're in compliance, and if we weren't, why did it take so long for us to get in compliance?
No, we are, we are in compliance with the law because we have an administrator who is not a veterinarian, and we have an assistant administrator who is a veterinarian. We are in compliance with the law, but we also operate services that are not specifically required by law in terms of impoundment. We take, um, you know, we do, we do the warden services for other jurisdictions, and we do all the jurisdictions in the county except for, um, Urbana right now is, is the only other warden, and those are not required that we do all of those things. So those are the director, so it's actually a dual administrator job and a director job together. And, um, the veterinarian fulfills the legal requirement for what the law requires in terms of animal care, but they, they, we, she does not fulfill what we need for to happen with the director, um, to supervise the facility and be there on, you know, when staff don't come, she's not there on the weekends, those kinds of things. She does what she can to cover for animal care issues and to deal with issues like that, but, but as I said, she's not a supervisor of the staff.
So this will just actually spell out the duties of the person?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Chairman Patterson?
Well, I, I was able to find from the May, uh, two thousand sixteen COW, um, there, there was a job content evaluation position for animal control that was, um, it looks like the title was senior position. Um, it seems like in the job description, it, um, you know, talks about how this person would have the supervi, uh, supervisory and management decision-making responsibilities so that they could share it with it. Um, and, you know, it talks about kind of the same things we're talking about today, um, about how, you know, right now the, uh, director is the only person who can do some of the responsibilities. So, so I mean, is, is that a position that we still have on file?
That is a position we still have on file. It is, however, a union position, and so it cannot do the things that we're needing the person to do. So it's not, the uni, a union position can't be a management position.
Uh, um.
Then, so we did, the, the, the effort, the effort some years, we, yeah. So the effort some years ago was to try to move somebody into a more senior position that could, um, help back up or be a little more senior in terms of if Stephanie was out for a day or two, they could sort of fill in certain things. But the senior, the senior person cannot, for example, approve people's paychecks, um, or timesheets. They can, they can't do, um, they can't make policy decisions, you know, those kinds of things.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Fortato?
Um, I, somebody, I think darling you earlier alluded to this. I just am trying to get a handle on the school board, um, in this department. So we don't service Urbana at all. Do we provide any services for Urbana?
Uh, we currently provide impound services for Urbana and actually the entire rest of the county. Um, we, the only other jurisdiction that has a warden is Urbana. They have a, they have a warden from, that actually works in their police department and does warden services part-time. Um, but we also, for the other jurisdictions, provide all the warden services as well.
Do you anticipate we'll continue to provide impound services for Urbana?
Uh, actually, I'm, I don't, can't answer that question. They considered, they were the only jurisdiction that has not signed the I G A that we had. The board looked at last September and revised last fall, and they lost it somehow in their paperwork, and so they were considering it last night at their city council meeting, and I just don't know whether it passed or not to sign the I G A. I'm assuming that they will. There's not other really options for them to impound animals at this point.
And there's no move on our part to not continue that relationship?
Um, no, if they'll sign the contract, we are continuing.
And do we have a sense of how much of the money that, um, how much of the budget for this office comes from Urbana? Do you know?
Um, not offhand, I'm sorry.
All right, if you could find that out for me, I'd appreciate it. Um, in the future, I mean, I, I'm not entirely sure I will support the, the this, but I do think that going forward, uh, for a content evaluation committee, um, like, I think that's an important step, and I don't wanna forestall that process. Um, I'm not entirely convinced of the, the need for the position or the need for the position, given the other needs of other positions throughout the county, but I, I do think having, going through the committee process is valuable, and in all cases, is something that the board should support. Um, so I'll support the, I'll support this stuff.
Okay, let me just say, um, that the team, the animal control team talked about this. Um, the question really was whether we hire another warden or whether we hire an assistant director, and everybody felt like we needed the assistant director, and it was exactly for the reason I said, there's nobody backing up Stephanie when she's gone. So that's, that's the reason.
Uh, Ms. Cl, uh, County Executive Club, uh, now, will, will the funded funds for this be, uh, needed to, will, will this require additional or new funds from the county for this position?
No, the county doesn't fund animal control through the general fund anyway. It's, it's all fees and contracts that we have with the various jurisdictions that we provide. It's, it's all fees and contracts that we have with the various jurisdictions that we provide services for. So the county, and, and in this particular year, we're at a point in the year that there've been so many vacancies, we will not have to ask for a budget amendment even if we have a new position. Because we delayed after, what happened was last fall, Rantoul's warden retired. And the village of Rantoul now contracts with us as well. Which they, they, they also used to do just impoundment services and they had their own part-time warden. But they did, it's getting more difficult to fill all those positions. So they decided it was easier to contract with us than to refill the position.
Chair Patterson?
Yeah, I kind of backpedal a little bit to the discussion about the intergovernmental agreement with Urbana. We, I mean, we, we did issue a ninety-day termination notice to Urbana, correct?
Yes, we did, because they haven't signed the contract.
Okay.
Everyone else has signed, I mean, we, yeah, they just, they haven't signed the contract.
Okay, so yeah, I just wanted to clarify. And so, so what is the status of that? I mean, if they?
My understanding is they voted on it last night. I just haven't heard the result yet.
Okay, but we, I assume that if they did vote to agree to it, we'd be withdrawing that termination of services, right?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Based on your statement about that this isn't going to cost any more money, I, I, forgive me if I just am forgetting this. I don't seem to recall animal services having some grand surplus of money. So, so you're saying that next year, when we get the budget, that their, that their personnel line is going to be flat? Just because there's a bunch of empty positions. So are you going to be coming to the board asking for more money? Or are, do we really, or are they somehow going to generate that much more fees to cover an entire position?
They're going to generate the fees to cover it, just like they always have. So last, you may recall, last year, in the late end of the year, I don't remember if it was September, October, sometime around then, I brought to the board the update of the ordinance and the IGAs that we signed with all of the different jurisdictions. And you guys approved that. And so the fees that we're charging each of the jurisdictions go up, went up, and also the amount it costs to, for example, buy licenses for animals. If you're licensing your dogs and cats, your pets, the fee went up. And Stephanie showed you a chart of why we were not comparable with surrounding counties, et cetera. And so we are generating, currently, we are generating more fees than we did. And more, the contracts are bringing in more revenue. And then in addition to that, Rantoul's warden retired. And so we added to our contract the warden services, which also meant that we needed to add a, at least part-time, maybe full-time warden. And at that time, we held and said it would be better to try to hire an assistant director rather than hire another warden. So that's why I'm bringing this to you now.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying all that, especially the financial stuff. And I do remember us raising the fees. Seeing no hands up and nobody has spoken up. I think we can go ahead and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Humphrey?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lachson?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pasalaqua?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Store?
Yes.
Straub?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thorson?
Yes.
Wolken?
Yes.
Ammons?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Coer?
Yes.
Esri?
Two, sorry, yes.
Fortato?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. That brings us to the big moment of the evening. Item number five, county executive, the recommendation for redistricting map. Darlene, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. So.
Uh-oh, we're having a, we're having a hearing problem.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll try to talk right into my microphone.
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So I've been meeting with my redistricting advisory group since January. We've been keeping track of all the developments going on in Springfield and the census and all those kinds of things. It became obvious that we needed to go ahead and do a recommendation if we were going to do one. And so we moved forward. We did receive a total, between the internal requests of the group and also some outside folks, we evaluated twelve maps. The summary of that you received this morning, I sent it out to all the board members. I know it's not time, a lot of time to look at it by this meeting, but you have some time yet. And so it turned out that we were able, which I was very pleased about, actually. There's not going to ever be a perfect map. And so I was very pleased that my group was, was able to agree on three of them that they thought were worthy to bring forward and, and fair, what they thought would be fair representation for the public of our county. So I'm proposing to you that you adopt map number one, plan number three, and plan number five A. And I have included with my memo to you all of the criteria that we use to evaluate the maps. And each map that's in the packet has the analysis. There's a little chart with it that talks about all those statistics. And then also you can see where the lines are drawn. Anybody that's interested can also go into the county's website. On the executive page, there's also a redistricting map tab. And you'll be able to get more, you can look at the maps in greater detail if you want to blow them up and see exactly what streets things are on and those kinds of things. You can also find all of the minutes from the meetings and all of the videos from the meetings where we talked about the maps and what we thought were the pros and cons of each map. We were still, as I mentioned to you, not trying to choose the perfect map. There could be a million maps that you could draw and we didn't have time to do a million maps. So we just tried to figure out what we thought were the benefits of a map. And then if we could improve it, we tried to do that a couple of times as well. So I present this to you for your consideration and I'm hopeful that the county board will take seriously the recommendations, which I think came from a very diverse group in the county and was pretty representative of the population of Champaign County. So I leave that with you.
Thank you. I, I saw a number of maps drawn and I personally, having made maps, not political maps, but other kinds of maps, know the considerable effort that goes into making these. Excuse me, while we, okay, we had an interloper here trying to get in the act. Is there any discussion on, on Ms. Clappel's presentation? Hearing none. We'll, we'll move on to the next item, which is county, oh, gosh. County Board, B, county board member compensation for the two thousand twenty-one apportionment plan. And this is for discussion only, per diem rate for the county board, committee of the whole, standing committees, and study sessions. Also, the per diem rate for special committees, subcommittees, and labor negotiation settings. And lastly, the county board chair annual salary amount. Just getting unwanted help here from the family cat. The, but the.
I think the cat wants to make a public comment.
Oh, the cat would like to make a public comment, but it, it, it doesn't, it, it lacks standing, so.
Public comment is closed.
But, not a question of the cat, but, no, the, the people, I will remind the, 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 the board that at the, at the, at the previous meeting when this was brought up and we had all of the information in the packet, that it seemed to be the consensus of the board at the time that, that there would be no change in compensation. Does anybody have any comment in that regard at this time? Hearing none. We'll move on to item C, county clerk monthly report, which is on, on page one forty-two. And I haven't checked the marriages, but I think that they're up quite a bit. I don't remember. Yes, we, and it's uncertain, we, we never did quite resolve whether this large number is cumulative or monthly. I don't see any other business. The chair does not have a report. The cat does, but we will place, designate items on the consent agenda numbers two, A, B, and C. Number three, item three, or, and, and number four. So that's under ten, A, and then two, A, B, C, three, and four. Mr. Chair Patterson, the cat has left the dining room table.
Megan, are you paying attention? Was that good as far as the consent agenda? Did that cover the?
Numbers three and four don't need to go forward to the consent agenda, but they did pass. They're going to the job content evaluation committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Okay, everything else was correct.
All right, thank you. Chris, blink twice if you're not okay. Moving on, there's no other business? Or does anybody have anything for other business? All right.
Mr. Thorland does.
Oh.
Yeah, just in light of recent events, I want to remind people when we do make the decision to go back to in-person meetings, it's probably not advisable to bring our pets to the meeting, as there may be incompatibilities.
Boy. I, I, I just, this anti-feline sentiment, just, I don't know.
I still don't know, having a cat steal my slipper, so.
All right, you guys are very out of order. Seeing no other business, I call this meeting adjourned.